I'd like to, I'd like to welcome everybody to, to Tuesday afternoon at 1:30's meeting. What we'd like to do is start off with Vice President Leisher with a prayer, and then we're going to follow that by the pledgations of the flag. Mr. Vice President, could you start us off?
Will you join me in prayer? Almighty God, you have, you have sent leaders among us. And this week, we lost one leader in Talbot County in the person of Kelly Cox, our citizen of Tillman who led an important nonprofit, the Phillips Wharf Environmental Center. We are, we are bereft with this loss. And we ask for your kindness and comfort for all those citizens of Tillman, for her family, for her friends, for her many supporters. Turn our minds now to the work at hand as we prepare our budget and other, other important matters for the people of Talbot County. Praying your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance
to the flag
of the United States of America.
of America. And to the republic
the republic which stands
one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Leisher. What a great prayer. And our hearts, hearts are felt with Kelly, losing Kelly. And she will not be forgotten, that's for sure. Okay, counsel, we'll start off with the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Yes, Mr. Leisher?
Yeah, Mr. President, I would like to add an item. I would like to amend the agenda to add an administrative resolution to stay enforcement of durational limits pertaining to temporary signs related to elections. Would we like to put this under after item number six?
Yes, well, let's make, let's make that, yeah. As, as item number six, yes, sir.
As item.
Yep. That sounds great.
So I'll, I'll move for that addition.
Okay.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. DeVio.
Aye.
Mr. Leisher.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mr. Pack. Mr. Pack.
Uh oh. Mute button cord.
I don't see his name up on the list. Maybe we've got four of us, are we okay to move on?
Yep, we've got a majority, so we can move on, okay? All right, so, and the next thing, the next line item is under minutes. Okay, counsel, have you had a chance to review the minutes from April 13th? Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections with the minutes? Hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted with unanimous consent. Disbursements is the next, okay? Counsel, have you had a chance to review the dispersments of May, May 4th? Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? Hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, now what we have, Madam Secretary, we've got a proclamation of correctional officer and employee week, it's a big deal this week. Madam Secretary, could you please read the proclamation into the record?
Proclamation Correctional Officers and Employees Week, May 2nd, 2021 through May 8th, 2021, whereas correctional officers and employee staff at Talbot County Detention Center for the purpose of maintaining custody, security, control of every inmate, every hour of every day of every week of every month of every year. And whereas the correctional officers and employees of the Talbot County Department of Corrections are essential to the county's criminal justice system, system and public safety by not only maintaining custody, security, and control of individuals committed to the detention center, but also by creating opportunities for inmates to resolve those personal issues that led to their incarceration. And whereas the correctional officers and employees of the Talbot County Department of Corrections are responsible for the administration and operation of a variety of programs and services beyond the walls of the detention center, including but not limited to work release, electronic home monitoring, and community service. And whereas the important work of correctional officers and employees rarely receives the recognition from the public it deserves. Yet, the professionalism, dedication, and courage routinely exhibited by these employees in the performance of assigned duties is worthy of and deserves our utmost respect. And whereas Talbot County is most fortunate to employ this highly professional, equally committed, and extremely capable cadre of correctional officers and employees. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim the week of May 2nd through 8th, 2021, as Correctional Officers and Employees Week in Talbot County, and encourage all citizens of the county to recognize, acknowledge, and appreciate the many contributions made by these individuals to the safety of our community and to the quality of life enjoyed by all residents of and visitors to Talbot County. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 4th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, good job. Is there a motion to second to approve the proclamation?
I'll be on it too, Mr. Callahan.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, could you please, please call the roll?
Mr. Callahan.
Before, before we call a roll, if I just give a brief comment, I don't know whether or not Mr. Kukolos or anyone from his, his staff is online with us. But I just want to just personally state that they are, in my opinion, sometimes the unforgotten part of the criminal justice system. They're not seen out riding around in cars and they're not seen out at many public events, although they do get out. And they, they're seen sometimes if you're in court as they're transporting inmates to and from court hearings. But the role that they play in the, the criminal justice wheel is a vital one. And the number of services, there are several state pieces of legislation right now that are mandating all types of additional treatment services to be provided, to be provided for by the local detention centers in the 24 jurisdictions across Maryland. So it just adds to their, their duties and responsibilities as they make sure that the people under their charge are well taken care of. So I just want to say to Terry, if he's online, thank you and your team for all that you do. We'll always have my support and my continued appreciation for what you do, not just for the inmates there, but what you also do to keep Talbot County safe, day in and day out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Madam Secretary, could you please, please call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. DeVio.
Aye.
Mr. Leisher.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mr. Pack.
Aye.
Thank you, counsel, is, is Terry on the line, Jess?
Yes, Mr. Callahan, Terry is on the line.
Hey Terry, welcome.
Great to be with you today on such a fine day.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, so you've got the floor, so tell us a little bit about what's going on.
Well, National Correctional Employees Week has been part of our history since the early 80s when Warren Burger, Chief Justice of the Supreme Court, thought it would be a great idea and collaborated at a later time with President Reagan. And they systemically thought that it would be good to recognize those who work behind the walls of American jails and prisons. As part of that, we have historically spent the week providing wonderful things for our staff. And right here at the 115, which is what they call themselves, the 115 Unit on Dover Street, we're recognizing them in a number of different ways this week. First, we select an employee of the year that represents Talbot County. And each day, we have something different planned for the staff. Yesterday, we had a barbecue and cookout. Today, we had a large scale breakfast. Tomorrow, we have some other wonderful functions. And next year, post-COVID, we even want to do some public events. But this year, we'll stay behind the walls and we'll recognize corrections for the difficult work they do, being responsible for the safety and well-being of all those who are incarcerated. And we take great pride in providing that mission and vision for both this department and the county. So we appreciate the recognition and the proclamation that was just unanimously heard and appreciate Mr. Pack's kind expressions toward our chosen profession. And, you know, it just feels good to be in corrections this week. And by the way, it's also Nurse Appreciation Week because we have medical staff on board here. So we also recognize and appreciate them in the providing of their duties to the inmates and staff behind the walls. So we thank you for this very special week.
Thanks a lot, Terry. Appreciate everything you guys do. Vice President Leisher. Say something.
I, I can do, I can do a little more than echo Mr. Pack's words. You know, I, I had no insight into, into this before I came on council and got my, my orientation tour of, of the department. And, and it really is impressive, the, the, what we need to do and the seriousness with which we take our responsibility here. And so thanks to all these employees for, for doing that so well and, and taking it so seriously.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Ms. Price.
Yes, definitely, I think until you're on the, on the council, you, you think about our deputies and the sheriff and the EMTs and all of that. And people don't think about, you know, as part of public safety, what our correctional officers do. And yes, we all get that first tour and we're all glad when they don't keep us locked up, that they let us back out of the jail. But we have an opportunity to see how very hard that they work. And I'm very honored to be a part of honoring them this week for what they do every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Christian DeVio.
Yes, thank you. Director Kukolos, I'd like to thank you. And I want to let you know how much I appreciate you coming over from Anarundel County to Talbot County. I know it's a, that's a significant change going from budgets and looking into what's available. You've done a wonderful job with the crew that you have in there. And I, I know that they appreciate it. And it shows in the work that they do. When they came in before and before, and we saw how many of them had second jobs, part-time jobs trying to get by. Yet I know that they still volunteer and come in during the holidays. At the Christmas time was my favorite time, the dinner that's provided, Christmas lunch that's provided. And COVID is very on the forefront of everybody's mind, but you're still dealing with the heroin pandemic that's going on. When we look at the high numbers of people who are addicted that are in the facility and the dangers that go along with that. So I, I greatly appreciate for the, the work that you do in there, rehabilitating and putting people back out on the streets, back where they should be, back in the community and giving them a second chance. So thank you for all your hard work and all the programs that you facilitate.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Director Kukolos, I, I, it's an honor to have you here to direct that department. And, and we were so blessed to have you here. And I'm just, you know, like counsel said, counsel couldn't be more happy with somebody like you running the show. And, you know, let's face it, you're, you're keeping us safe too. The sheriffs is there, you're there, you guys are there to keep us safe and, and actually rehabilitate, rehabilitate people for, for to come out and be citizens. So not, not only you're there to be safe, you're there to, to actually help people move on with their lives. And that's, it's a big part of things. And, you know, thank the Lord, we have somebody like you that realizes that and, and, and helps with that, those programs. So once again, you know, enjoy the week. All the employees, if some of the employees are listening, I really want to thank all of them for all the hard work they're doing. Because, I mean, that, it's like you say, they don't see the day, the daylight during the day. They're all inside and doing their work. And we can appreciate all, enough of all the hard work you're doing and dedication for the county. So I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. And I, I will say, we always say the, the greater part of our population are Talbot County residents. So when we really say that we like to discharge people in better condition than when they arrive, we, we like to step up to that mission. And as a department, we are committed to that outcome. So we appreciate the support that is not only verbally provided by the County Council, but also mighty is the pen of the support provided by the County Council. And by the way, Mr. DeVio, we're having the Christmas party again this year, hopefully post-COVID. And we're certainly to invite you and all the colleagues on the council to come and celebrate and enjoy a good day. It's always wonderful to see the children come in and interact. So we really appreciate the support. It means a lot to us because as Ms. Price indicated, we are the forgotten entity of the trifecta of public safety. We don't, we always see the fire apparatus, the ambulances, and the police cruisers. And we keep up our end on the inside. So once again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, counsel, next thing on the list, we had that little agenda change, so everybody understands that. So Madam Secretary, would you please read the administrative resolution into the record, please?
An administrative resolution to stay enforcement of durational limits under Talbot County Code Section 190-42.4A, Table V919C, pertaining to temporary signs related to elections. Do you want me to read it in its entirety, sir?
Should, should we, Madam Secretary, should we, should we read that into the record or are we okay?
It's up to you.
Okay.
Probably what's part to read it.
Yeah, if you don't mind, that'd be great, okay?
Whereas Talbot County Code Section 190-42.4A provides permit exceptions and regulations for certain temporary signs. The temporary signs listed in Table V9 are permitted without a sign permit and are not subject to the requirements of this section for maximum sign area and maximum number of signs. However, such signs shall conform to the requirements set forth below and other applicable rate requirements of this section. And whereas Table V919C provides other temporary signs relating to, related to an upcoming event. Such signs shall be posted no more than 60 days before the project, event, or election to which they apply and removed within seven days after the conclusion of the project, event, or election. And whereas the legislative intention of council for imposing the foregoing durational limits on election signs displayed on private property was to serve the substantial interest of Talbot County in one, minimizing for aesthetic reasons the proliferation of visual clutter caused by candidate authorized campaign signs. And two, promoting traffic safety in that such signs may obstruct views and distract motorists. And whereas council, having consulted with the Office of the County Attorney, has concluded that durational limits on election yard signs displayed on private property are unconstitutional based on decisions issued by the United States District Court for the District of Maryland. And whereas council wishes to stay enforcement of the duration limits of Talbot County Code Section 190-42.4A, Table V919C, pertaining to election yard signs displayed on private property. And whereas the authority for the enactment of this resolution derives from Section 202 of the Talbot County Charter, which provides that the County Council is responsible for the enforcement of the laws passed in the county. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of Talbot County that Section 1, Talbot County shall not enforce the duration limits of Talbot County Code Section 190-42.4A, Table V919C, pertaining to election yard signs displayed on private property. Section 2, this administrative resolution shall become effective immediately, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 4th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Appreciate that, good job. Is there a motion to second it to approve this administrative resolution?
I think it needs to be introduced, right?
Yes, we need to introduce.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, okay, yes. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. DeVio.
Aye.
Mr. Leisher.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mr. Pack.
Thank, thank you, counsel. Okay, next.
Mr. President, now that we've introduced this, should, should we ask the county attorney to provide any further explanation that's not simply contained within the words of the, I mean, there's, there's a certain clarity to the words of the resolution itself. But I don't know if any further explanation is warranted before we take action on this.
I'll put it down as well.
Okay. Thank you, Vice President Leisher. Is, okay.
Yes, I can provide some clarification, just add a little more context to this. Sure. This is, this administrative resolution is, it's in response to litigation that's been initiated in the US District Court. It's a matter of public record regarding the durational limits on election signs. And simply acknowledges that, as it states in the, in the resolution, that the, the US District Court has previously held that these, that such durational requirements on election signs are unconstitutional and that the county is staying enforcement of that, that section. And the, this is similar to another administrative resolution that the council passed in 2019 regarding short-term rentals. So there is some precedent for this. And the urgency is due to the need to file this with our response to the court, which is due today. We only had 21 days from the day we were served. So that, that's why this has come together so quickly.
Okay, I appreciate that explanation. Counsel, everybody okay with that? Anybody want to speak?
I, I would just say, yes, thank you, Mr. Callahan. I would just add to it that, you know, signage to a rational private property, we, we heard that the, it has been deemed unconstitutional. So therefore, I think it's only prudent that Talbot County stays in line with the constitutional ruling regarding sign, sign limitation or duration, excuse me, on private property. We still have in our signed ordinance, a size requirement, which this administrative resolution does not speak to. But I do support it in the fact that we want to make sure that Talbot County laws are certainly in line with the Constitution.
Thank you, Mr. Leisher, I appreciate it. Mr. Leisher, you, you want to say much or say anything?
Nothing, nothing further on this. I think that, that I appreciate the, the context that our attorney has added and, and Mr. Pack as well. Thank you.
Yep, okay. Mr. DeVio, you good?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good. I'm, I don't even like political signs when my name was written on them. I do think that we should align with the Constitution, unfortunately.
Okay, okay. Ms. Price.
Well, fortunately or unfortunately, no, I believe in the Constitution. And this is something that will provide some clarity. And, you know, what people do on their own private property, as long as it fits within our other limitations, is certainly fine by me and we'll, let's just get it corrected.
I, I would agree with counsel. And Patrick, I appreciate you helping us with all of that and clarifying. And sometimes, you know, we, you know, we, we have a little hiccup every now and then. We need help and that's what we're trying to do.
And this is not a unique issue to Talbot County. It's based on recent Supreme Court cases that have been filled it out through the courts. Jurisdictions all over the country are struggling with this, so we're certainly not unique.
Yeah, yeah. See you tomorrow. Okay, I appreciate it.
No, I, I would say that I think, I think all of us are happy to get her signs down. We don't want them up very long at all because it does, it does prevent a little bit of, a little bit of clutter out there. So we appreciate people who, who support the candidates. But, you know, looking at them all the time is, gets old. So I know that we, the five of us have been really good about getting ours down as fast as possible.
Exactly, Ms. Price. Okay, so are we, are we all good, Madam Secretary? Do we need to do anything else?
Mr. President, as this is an administrative resolution, I, I will make the motion. And it has been introduced unanimously by council. Patrick has pointed out that we do have somewhat of a time requirement here. So I would, I would make the motion that we move the matter forward to vote this evening. It is administrative resolution, it does not require public hearing. So therefore, I would make the motion that it be moved along to vote at this time.
Okay, Mr. Pack, I appreciate it. So, so get a motion, okay, we have, we have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. DeVio.
Aye.
Mr. Leisher.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mr. Pack.
Aye.
Thank you, counsel, I appreciate it. Thanks a lot, Patrick.
Thank you.
Good job. All right, let's, let's move on.
Madam, now before council for vote, Mr. Callahan.
Okay. With administrative. I'm sorry. Okay.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. DeVio.
Aye.
Mr. Leisher.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mr. Pack.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Okay. All right. So we're ready to move on, counsel. So last, last meeting, counsel, we had a priority list for the Maryland Department of Transportation. And we, you know, switched a few things around. And Mr. Clark and helped us with all of that. So we're, we're going to get that taken care of here. And is Mr. Clark here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, okay, Ray, is Mike here too?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, you guys want to, you want to bring us up to speed on the new list?
Sure thing. If you want, I'll kind of jump into it. Again, as you noted, I think at the April 27th meeting, we presented the list. I think during that meeting, emergency management, Brian Lacates, identified the fatalities that had occurred down at Maryland Route 320, 322 and US Route 50. And ultimately, I think in discussions with the council last week, we looked at adding, I guess, definitely as our number one item for improvements to Maryland Route 322, US 50 intersection south. At the same time, we've gone ahead and added 1B, which would be for Maryland Route 322 and US 50 intersection north. So we've added those and I guess through the council's review and I guess concurrence.
Okay. Okay. Mike, Mike, you, you want to, you want to say anything?
I think Ray pretty much covered it all.
Okay, all right, okay, that sounds good, all right. Counsel, is, is there a motion to second to approve the new list?
So moved.
I'll second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. DeVio.
Aye.
Mr. Leisher.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mr. Pack.
Aye.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ray and Mike, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, counsel, man, we're right on time, 2 o'clock in the public Okay, Council, man, we're right on time, 2:00 in the public hearing. Okay? Council will be holding a public hearing as our next item of business, okay? Our first public hearing this afternoon is on the constant yield. There's nobody hardly on the planet other than Ms. Lane that can explain all this, so I'm going to turn it over there to you. Ms. Lane, you with us?
Mr. Callahan, Ms. Lane is with us this evening. She may just be having a hard time with her sound. We're going to go check on that.
All right. All right, do we want to, let's see, okay. Do we want to, we want to move on? Are we, do we want to move on to a couple of things or do we want to just wait?
Not unless Mr. Stamp is comfortable going ahead and giving us the constant yield update.
I was going to say that you want...
Back I yield to Angela, she'll be with us in a minute.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Callahan, they are going down to work on her sound situation. In the interim, we could go to county manager report and do that one item.
Absolutely, that's what I was thinking. Thank you, Jess.
Council President, under county manager's report today, I have Ray Clark here. We have a request from the Department of Public Works to submit a request to the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA, for obligation of funds and letter of intent to meet conditions for replacement of the belt filter press at the Region 2 wastewater treatment plant, St. Michael's. Requesting Council approval to accept a loan from the USDA in the amount of $600,000 for the replacement of the belt filter press at the Region 2 wastewater treatment plant. This will be a 30-year loan at the interest rate of 1.75%. The loan will be paid by users within the St. Michael's, Unionville, Tunis Mills and Copperville and the Royal Oak, Newcombe and Bellevue sanitary districts, seeking approval for Council to sign the letter of intent to meet conditions in the request for obligation funds with USDA. And Ray is here and can add any detail or answer any questions relating to this request.
I'm here.
Ray, are you with us?
I am, sir. And if you want, a belt filter press basically is for solid management. What we do is we take what's, I guess settles out of the wastewater, we press the water out of it and then dispose of it in landfill. The press we currently have is probably close to 40, almost 45 years old, so it's exceeded its service life.
Got you. Okay. Any questions out of Council? Anybody want to? If not, if not, is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. That concludes the county manager report.
Okay, no problem.
Mr. Callahan, we're going to see if Ms. Lane has connection. Ms. Lane, can you hear us? And if not, I have her statement on the constant yield and I'd be happy to read that into the record if you'd like.
Yes, Ms. Morris, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay, we got Angela.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Lane.
Okay, thank you. There are two public hearings today. If you wish to speak at any of these hearings, please state your name and address for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak if you're representing yourself or five minutes to speak if speaking on behalf of a group or association. The first public hearing is on the constant yield. The Talbot County Council in the FY 2022 proposed budget is proposing to adopt a real property tax rate of 65.29 cents per $100 of assessed valuation for all properties located outside the incorporated towns. This rate is 1.57 cents higher than the current real property tax rate. This rate is 2.35 cents higher than the constant yield rate of 62.94 cents and will generate $1,131,533 more in property tax revenues in FY 2022 from the unincorporated area of the county. Properties located within the incorporated towns will again be granted a tax differential which sets the real property tax rates between 6.01 cents and 13.3 cents lower than the county rate. The county real property tax rates for properties located within the towns are higher than the constant yield rate for the towns. The county council will not adopt the FY 2022 tax rate today. The FY 2022 tax rate will be adopted as part of the FY 2021-2022 annual budget and appropriation ordinance currently scheduled for adoption on Tuesday, May 18, 2021.
Okay, Ms. Lane. Okay, Angela, okay, I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Lane. I will now open the public hearing on the constant yield. If you wish to provide comments on the constant yield, please provide your name. You will have three minutes if you're speaking for individual, five minutes if you're speaking for an organization. Mr. Dorm, do we have any callers or participants who wish to speak on the constant yield?
Okay, if you wish to speak, please press asterisk 3 on your phone or if you're on the computer in the bottom, press, raise hand.
Body that wants to speak on it?
No one is indicating.
Okay, okay. Yeah, just keep us informed if somebody does, okay? All right, thank you. That concludes the public hearing on the constant yield. Madam Secretary, could you please read the title of the Bill 1473 into the record?
Bill number 1473, An Act to Establish the 2021-2022 Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance.
Right. Mrs. Lane, would you, I'll turn it over to you and Mr. Stamp for PowerPoint presentation.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Callahan. I believe, okay, there it is on your screen. Everyone should be able to see the PowerPoint.
Yep, it looks good, yep. Looks great.
Can we get Ms. Lane's volume turned up? I can barely hear her, so I'm afraid the public is going to be, barely be able to hear her.
It is up as high as I can get it. Let me try it using the handset. Is this better?
That's better. That is better.
Do it this way then.
Yep.
Okay, the fiscal 2022 proposed general fund budget is $112,535,000. The current fiscal 2021 general fund budget is $96,550,000. Next slide, yes. The county council, in preparing this budget, received funding requests for operating and capital items of 119, of just over $119 million, which is $22.5 million more than the current fiscal 2021 budget. The proposed budget for fiscal 2022 is just over $112 million, which is almost $16 million or 16.56% more than the current fiscal year budget. Included in this increase is of almost $16 million. Over $14 million is for transfers to the Capital Projects Fund of $10 million and funding for capital outlay purchases, primarily equipment, of $4 million. In order to balance the budget, the county has used prior year fund balance of over $20 million to balance. And while this is a big increase overall, you'll note that most of this is going to capital items, capital projects, capital outlay equipment that are primarily one-time purchases. The operating expenses of the county is increasing by 3.86%. The budget does include a one-cent increase to the property tax rate above what is allowed under the real property tax cap. This one cent was authorized by the voters of Talbot County in November 2020. Public safety is a top priority in this budget. I'll now turn it over to Mr. Stamp.
Thank you, Angela, appreciate that. So the overarching strategy with this budget and our overarching management strategy is to ensure optimal service to the community while maintaining both transparency and fragility. It centers on three areas, personnel, projects and process. We focus on the retention and the recruitment of our workforce, recognizing that they drive much of the successes that we see in our ability to serve the public. Secondary projects, the budget addresses a number of core projects that are needed to be addressed. And then finally, process will be evaluating all of our processes to make sure that they're optimal in serving the public. Next slide, please. Believe the budget is practical, flexible and visionary. It's practical because there is only a modest increase in the operational budget, as Ms. Lane mentioned, and those are recurring costs. It's flexible because the investment in capital projects requires a secondary effort by county council to pass enabling legislation, which allows further scrutiny of individual projects. And if something were to change mid-year, we have the ability to return those funds back to the fund balance to address needs. It's visionary because it signals recovery. As you know, we are in the midst of a pandemic and we are, although we're quite hopeful that things will continue to get better, it does signal that we are trying to recover and invest in long overdue projects. It does also position us in a good position for shovel-ready projects with the potential for federal stimulus money moving forward. So again, we believe it to be practical, flexible and visionary. Next slide, please. And then finally, we are investing in the, what we call the CIP or Capital Improvement Program. We're addressing the core pillars that support, we believe, support our community, which is public safety and health, infrastructure, environment, education, economic stability. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it back to Ms. Lane, who will talk a little bit about some of the funding that we'll be addressing. Ms. Lane, thank you.
Thank you. This slide shows budget highlights. And again, I want to reiterate that while this is a large increase in the overall budget, our operating budget is going up by less than 4%. So that is a very modest increase in operating expenses. And as I said earlier, public safety is a priority in this budget. So included in that area, we have funding for increased retirement expenses associated with potentially joining the law enforcement officer's pension system for the sheriff's office. This has been a priority of our sheriffs for many, many years and is necessary to retain qualified deputies in the sheriff's office. We also have salary scale adjustments for 911 dispatchers, EMTs, paramedics and correctional officers to address recruitment and retention issues with these personnel positions. We have added six new positions in this budget. Four additional positions are for 12-hour day emergency medical services unit. This unit was started with part-time staff and overtime in the current budget for less hours and less days a week. We are now trying to provide the full-time staffing to allow it to operate 12 hours a day, seven days a week, which is necessary to provide coverage for the north end of the county. We also have added a legal assistant position for the Office of the State's Attorney and one administrative fiscal position for the Department of Public Works. The Talbot County Public Schools, which is a very large portion of our budget, is funded at $532,000 more than the state mandated maintenance of effort level, but it's the same level they were funded in the current fiscal year, fiscal 2021. And there is a step increase for all eligible full-time county employees. Since so much of our budget increase is for capital projects, I wanted to outline what capital projects are being proposed in this budget. Some of these will be funded with debt service fund, some of these will be funded with the cash, the $10 million that we have appropriated, that this budget appropriates to the Capital Projects Fund. Under county facilities, we're requesting $2 million for land acquisition for future county sites. We know we have priorities set up for land for our public safety sector. We need to relocate the sheriff's office out of the Talbot County Business Center where they are currently located. We know we need to increase our response time or decrease our response time for emergency medical services, so we need to look at station locations for that department also. So this is for future land acquisition. We have $5 million in the budget for the Public Safety Center. This will house our sheriff's department and perhaps other safety, public safety-related departments. We have courthouse roof replacement, which is a minor amount. The other two major projects under county facilities are our EMS stations. We have $1.2 million, which would be phase one of the EMS station expansion, and this is primarily focused on expanding into the north section of the county where we do not currently have a station. We also have $2.3 million identified for broadband expansion, and that is to work with eastern utilities. This is actually to match a grant eastern utilities receive to provide broadband in the unserved areas of the county. These are areas where our residents don't have an option through Atlantic Broadband or eastern utilities or another viable broadband option. So we are working to get that service available to all our citizens. Under highways and streets, we have two roads projects, Black Dog Alley and Airport Road. Both of those projects are really to address safety concerns and to upgrade the roads, and this is just upgrading a portion of those roads in this budget. The full road expansion and upgrade will cost more than what we have here, the $2.7 million, and these will be projects phased in over a number of years. We have funding for the Frederick Douglass Park on the Tuckahoe and for a study for the Bill Burton Park. We also have included funding for the Easton High School roof replacement. This is for the first year of this roof replacement. It is a two-year project, but we have $1.3 million in the current budget to replace a portion of that roof. We also are putting, in terms of cash, $3.8 million into reserves of the Capital Projects Fund for future projects. You know, as I mentioned a number, these are multi-year projects, so we will have cash available to fund those projects in the subsequent years. Eastern High School roof, right above it, being one of those major projects. So our capital budget for fiscal 2022 is 18, almost 18.9 million, which is well-needed to address many of these needs that have been in our capital budget for a number of years. But as Mr. Stamp had said earlier, if something were to happen, we can transfer funds for, that have not been allocated to any of these projects, back into the general fund if that is necessary in the future. The proposed budget, Bill number 1473, is eligible for vote on Tuesday, May 18, 2021. Written comments will be accepted by the county council until Wednesday, May 5, 2021 at noon. So there is an email address that you can send your comments to, or they can be mailed or hand-delivered to the county council office at 11 North Washington Street. And information on Bill number 1473 may be found at the county website at www.talbotcountymd.gov. In addition, we will also have, there is also copies of the ordinance, the budget workbook and the two-page budget summary on the website under the Finance Office tab. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lane, I appreciate it. Mr. County Manager, do you need to say anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you, guys, appreciate it. You did a phenomenal job, presentation, and we really appreciate it. Now we'll be opening the public hearing. We would now be opening a public hearing on Bill 1473. If you wish to provide comments on the bill, please provide your name. You will have three minutes to speak as an... You will have three minutes to speak as an individual and five minutes to speak if you're representing an organization. Mr. Durham, do we have any callers or participants that would wish to speak on the Bill 1473?
We do. Our first caller is Santo Grande.
Okay.
Please begin.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for letting us come before you.
Hey, Santos, could, it's Chuck. Could you turn your volume up a little bit if you can? Not much, but yeah, just keep going.
Again, thank you very much for allowing us to come before you.
That's better. That's better. Great.
Okay, great.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming your right-hand man did that. You know what I mean, Andy?
He's Mr. Fix-It.
I got you.
Yeah, we call him Mr. Fix-It around here.
There you go. There you go. You know, he's lurking somewhere. I can't see him, but he's around.
He's not smiling.
I sense, I sense he's here, you know?
That's right. Well, we'd like to thank you very much for looking at our budget proposal that came before you this spring, and our original request was 245,008.05, and we realized that we were asking for some of those newer vehicles to help start the mobility on demand, and it may have had a little bit of excessive cost in there, but we, so it was decreased by 40,000 for DCS to pick up 40,000 of that request. And we are asking if you would reconsider an additional 20,000. So our share would be 20,000 towards the purchase of these vehicles, and the county would request you all to be up to $225,000. So again, we're just bringing that request to you. We know you have a lot in front of you. You have a lot to deal with and, but we really want to get our mobility services improved in your county. We think the demand is there. We know that the population is there, especially as the senior citizen population grows in Talbot County. We'd like to be a part of that. We'd like to be a positive part to that, because a lot of times, transportation is the billy goat and having a hard time. So we don't want to be that. We want to be able to do the services that need to be done and do it appropriately, correctly, and safely. So if there's any, any opportunity to increase us by that additional 20,000, and again, DCS will come in with the matching $20,000 to bring it back up to what was needed and requested. And if, we would just wish that you would consider that, and we understand that you have a lot of pressure on you all, and you know, we just thought we would come and before you and bring you up to date on our, our position. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Council? Does Council want to say anything?
We don't usually comment during public testimony. We just are here to listen right now.
Okay. All right. That sounds good. Well, Andy, would you like to say anything? Are you, you just, you good?
I just want to point out, and you already know, but the public should be thanking Ms. Lane for almost two decades of work on putting budgets together and stepping down after this final run, and I just want to thank her myself. I know how valuable she is and how much hard work she puts into it. So thank you, Angela.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Hollis. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Well, we're going to take this in consideration, and I appreciate your presentation, and I can't thank you guys enough for all the work you're doing and, you know, stepping up to the plate. And when you, when you come to us and did the presentation of those new vehicles and stuff, I thought that was brilliant, and you know, we're going to try to do everything we can to support you guys, that's for sure.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Bye.
Mr. Durham, is there, is there anybody else online that would like to speak?
We do have the sheriff's office online if you're, you have a comment.
Yeah. Hi, Council. Sheriff Campbell, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Stamp, as well as Angela, for your commitment to public safety and specifically the sheriff's office in this budget. I know these aren't different, these are difficult decisions and costly decisions, and I just wanted to, just for a minute, just to thank you publicly, each one of you for being a supporter of law enforcement, public safety, and this office and this budget. Thank you all very much for your support.
Thank you, Sheriff Campbell. We can't thank you guys enough for protecting us, and this, this council has your back, as you can see, and we're supporting a lot of things in the future to keep you guys here. And, and we want you to stay here, and we want all the employees to be happy, and they need to feel that we, we support them, and we do.
Well, thank you. This competitive, this competitive retirement program will make us competitive on the, specifically the eastern shore, which I know that's going to help make great strides in our retention efforts, so thank you.
I'm, I'm, I'm happy to support it, and that, that's, that's what we should be doing. So thanks a lot. Appreciate it. Thanks for all you do.
We also have the public school system on.
Yeah.
I believe that's me. Good evening, President Callahan, council members, county manager Stamp and staff. This is Kelly Griffith, superintendent. Talbot County Public Schools and proud mom of three graduates who I can say are all gainfully employed and out of my house, so that's a good thing. I would like to begin by thanking you, the Talbot County Council, for your unwavering support through this pandemic, the collaborative spirit in building the new Easton Elementary School campus, which is amazing, and your continued support through these identified capital projects moving forward. So thank you so much for that. This year, the COVID-19 pandemic created many challenges, as you know, in the delivery of public education. However, it also highlighted the foresight that Talbot County has had over the years by creating a one-to-one technology environment, which certainly helped during these transitions. It also highlighted the importance of in-person learning and the potential of virtual learning in the future, which we are going to learn from our teachers and our students of how to offer education in the future. While in-person learning is the overarching goal, it's abundantly clear that we need to continue to also provide some virtual learning opportunities for some students, which calls for some changes in staffing and instruction. There were students who, some students who struggled this year, but some students thrived for many different reasons, ranging from social, emotional issues, family needs and accommodations, or medical reasons. In addition to serving these students, we're looking forward to building upon this year's experiences and creating new, innovative, and unique opportunities. We must be forward-thinking in Talbot County and education. Overall, I want you to know that Talbot County Public Schools had more staff and students in person than most county school districts in the state of Maryland. We are certainly proud that our teachers have come to work in person, our students have come in our buildings, and we are also very proud of our community's support in making this happen, because it really does come with community support. Talbot County Public Schools spent the past five years implementing the Vision 2022 Street, 2020 Vision Strategic Plan, and we have realized many accomplishments through this plan. The class of 2020 had the highest graduation rate overall, as well as each individual group, whether it was race, special ed, or free and reduced meals. We've closed the gap in each of those student group areas, and we've also been able to decrease our dropout rate. It's the lowest dropout rate we've seen in Talbot County Public Schools. We've been able to establish an education foundation to support our students through scholarships and teachers through innovative experiences with their students. We have made tremendous growth in our expansion of our Grow Our Own program by getting some of our employees certified to become teachers and really supporting our students in going into the teaching profession. We've begun the task of revising most of our curriculum. Social studies is this coming year, and this Board of Education has now been planning and budgeting for our new Strive for 2025 Strategic Plan, which really is going to encompass four areas: early childhood learning readiness for success, social emotional support services, equitable access to academics and support for success, and the recruitment and retention of a diverse staff. We feel very important in those endeavors. A goal without a plan is just a wish. We have a goal, we have a plan, and we will commit to working the plan to garner what our children deserve, which is our very best. While we are proud of many accomplishments this year in and out of the classroom, the TCPS team is committed to helping each child realize their full potential, which does come at a price, an investment for all 4,600 children that we serve. As you know, it takes a village to educate a child, and Talbot County is an amazing village. Talbot County Public School is blessed with over 1,000 community partners who help us do this work every day. I can tell you, our current budget request would have been much higher without these committed partners, as they have continued to supplement our budget to meet many of our needs throughout the school year. While we originally requested 3.5 million more than this current year, when creating the budget in the fall and not knowing where this pandemic was going, we were able to use some cost savings and grants and cut back that request by $2 million. Now what we're asking is for you to reconsider an allocation of 1 million above this year's budget, so the additional money could be used to pay for an additional special education teacher, an additional language learner, language learner teacher, because we are getting several unaccompanied minors coming to the area, one certified nursing assistant teacher, because that's a new program, the CNA program, so we can work with Chesapeake College to growing our nursing program, and three all-day pre-K teachers, so we can offer all-day pre-K at every school, a cost of living increase for our staff and staff, and a slight overall health insurance increase. Overall, it's approximately a 3% increase over last year. The public has spoken through budget surveys indicating their top four priorities: offer competitive salaries and benefits, maintain lower class size, update curriculum, and increase security measures. We have certainly increased those security measures with a lot of the grants. We have not used a lot of local money to do that, and we've also been able to update our curriculum and a lot of cost savings measures. While I continue to express the need for full funding, I am, just want you to know that I am always grateful to the Talbot County Council for listening to the needs of the school system in moving us forward toward a world-class educational system, which will ultimately allow our community to thrive economically through an educated workforce. Although it can be argued that public school systems are a cost to the public, such expenses should more properly be thought of as an investment. Please see your return on investment of the 2020 Vision Plan with the handout that was provided and sent to you, letting you know all of the successes we have had over the past five years. Thank you for investing in Talbot County Public Schools and working with us to go from good to better to best while working the plan. And in closing, learning is not attained by chance. It must be sought for with order and attended with diligence. This champion for order and diligence was Abigail Adams in 1780, the beloved, brilliant wife of the second president, John Adams. She was a champion of education. I am here tonight to be the champion of our school district, and to really help us move forward, we need your help. I appreciate you allowing this forum to all those who wish to share. Thank you so much for your collaboration, your support, and I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. I really appreciate all that, that great, everything you guys do as far as the school is concerned. We appreciate it, too. And the word investing is a, is a great word, because the first thing that comes to my mind is a lot of us are from Talbot County, and we're investing. I went to that school. Ms. Price went to that school. Mr. DiVillo went to that school. So we're all invested in that school, all of us. So it, it can show you that some people can, can do things right, you know? And you guys are doing things right, and we're going to do the best we can to try to help you guys out. And I know it's been a tough year and stuff like that for you, so I don't even have to get into all that, so.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you, and thank you for your time tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. See you tonight. Okay.
Our next requested speaker is a computer user, Newman. I've made them a presenter. They can unmute their computer, and there you go.
This is Dana Newman from the library. Can you hear me?
Hey, Dana, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, good.
Good. I just had a few, few comments that I wanted to make.
Good problem.
I think everybody knows that the library is celebrating its 95th anniversary, and we have provided critical educational resources and served as a community center essential to the intellectual needs and personal growth of county residents. The staff this year have worked diligently to keep our community engaged, healthy, and to offer them valuable information and resources during the pandemic. Our efforts significantly provided resources such as programming assistance in finding food resources and employment, filling out unemployment claims, finding healthcare information, registering people for the COVID-19 vaccine, and enabling students to do their schoolwork and young children to attend age-appropriate programs while they were isolated at home. The library would like to thank the county council for their hard work on the fiscal year 2022 budget. In particular, I would like to emphasize Andy's thank you to Angela for the years of service that she's given the county. She's certainly given me over the last five years a lot of assistance, so I do want to personally thank her. We want to thank you for including most of the library's supplemental requests, which recognize the vital role our staff play in helping our patrons to grow and learn, that include funding for continuing to provide Wi-Fi hotspots for checkout for those people who don't have a good connection to the internet, and that help us to revitalize our book collection and offer library materials that meet the diverse needs of the community. The library is proud of everyone in the community, including the council and county staff who have assisted residents during this critical time, and we look forward to continuing to do our part to help in recovery efforts. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of how much we deeply appreciate all of your efforts over the last year, so thank you.
Thank you, Dana. We appreciate you guys, too, and we'll do our best to try to support you guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next is a phone caller, 410-490.
Hey, caller, could you please let us know your name, please, and where you're from?
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, if you could turn it up just a little bit, that would be great. Be great.
Okay. My name is Brittany Collier, and I am a track graduate, and my daughter attends White Marsh Elementary School. And I am calling to support the school day pre-K program that's asked for in the budget. I just wanted to give my support for the school as well as the program. It has been an excellent program for my child as well as several others that I, that I know in the program. She has expanded greatly in her social skills, her ability to learn letters, numbers, math. She's fully writing her name now, first and last, at five years old. She's learning beginning sound. She's excellent at nose now, going through her ending sound. And the teachers and staff have just been wonderful through this COVID situation, and getting the kids back in school has just been amazing. So I just wanted to offer my support to Talbot County Public Schools and the funding for the school day pre-K program.
Okay, okay. I really appreciate you calling, and that's a great, a great story, and we'll do our, we'll do our best. Thank you, caller. Mr. Durham?
Okay. Our next is a computer user, Foxwell. I've made you a panelist. You can unmute and present.
The last name is Foxwell?
That's correct.
Okay.
Hi, how are you guys?
Mrs. Foxwell, could you turn your volume up a little bit if you can?
Yes. Is that better?
Yeah, that's a little bit better. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Hi, my name is Leah Foxwell. I'm the mother of two elementary school students at White Marsh Elementary, and Mrs. Seidel asked me to make a quick statement regarding the all-day preschool program, as mentioned by Mrs. Griffith as well in her budget plan. as mentioned by Mrs. Griffith, as well in her budget plan. My daughter, Leila Foxwell, currently attends the White Marsh Elementary School preschool program. And the all-day program has been greatly beneficial for Leila. She's a very shy and, very shy child and was diagnosed at three years old with selective mutism. And since starting an all-day program, her vocabulary and confidence has skyrocketed. She's now very social and willing to speak to everyone. She's on track with her learning and her developmental quotas where she's supposed to be. The all-day program has also, will also help prepare her for what the rest of her school career will be. And although there is, and although she is there for the full day, she is allowed, she's allowed what she calls brain breaks. And this provides the children with the rest that their young minds need while having them at school for the full day, which in my opinion enables them to gain confidence and comfort with being away from home in a classroom setting at an early age. I think that this will make their transition into kindergarten much smoother. It also helps with her socialization with other children her age, which she desperately needs, especially after this year-long pandemic that we've all been suffering through. And I just honestly believe that now more than ever, it's important for young children to have this all-day program to give them access to the interaction, the education, the structure that they all greatly need and deserve right now, especially in these isolating times that we're in. So I just wanted to offer my support for the preschool program.
Thanks a lot, Ms. Foxwell. I appreciate you taking the time to, you know, call in. And we'll, we'll do our best to try to support some of your causes, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Durham?
We do not have anyone else indicating they want to speak. If you do want to speak on the phone, press asterisk three to indicate. And on a computer, press the raise hand button.
Okay. All right. So if somebody, if somebody pops on, just, just let me know, okay? So written comments will be accepted by the County Council until May 5th at noon. Email comments will be sent to publiccomments@talbotcountymd.gov. The public hearing on Bill 1473 is
recessed.
Recessed, yeah, I'm sorry, recessed until this evening at seven o'clock.
Yep.
Okay. So so we don't have to do, we don't, we don't do public comments or anything right now? We're just.
President Callahan, yes, you can go ahead and continue with public comments and council comments if you wish. And then at the conclusion, we will recess this meeting and reconvene this evening at 7:00 PM.
Okay, that's good. So Mr. Durham, do we have any public? We're going to start with public comments. Do we, do we have anybody online?
The only two people that have their hands up, I believe, have already spoken. That would be a Foxwell and Newman. If either one of you wants to speak again, if you can just press that, hit the raise hand button to make it flash one time, I'll, I'll let you speak again.
Okay, that's, that's cool. That's good. Okay, so I guess I'll move on to the council comments. Mr. Vice President, do you have anything for us?
I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pack?
Yes, Mr. Callahan.
Yep, yep. Any council comments? You good?
I know. I'll wait till this evening.
Okay, no problem. Appreciate it. Mr. DiVillo?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Price?
I'm good right now. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, I appreciate, I appreciate all the hard work, Counsel. I'm getting to this point with the budget. And Angela, if you're listening, I really appreciate all the hard work that you've done over the years. And we've all said it before, we're really sorry to lose you, that's for sure. And all the staff, all the staff that has worked on this and all this hard work that the staff has done, I can't thank you enough. So I want to leave, this, this is a big deal. We've got a county manager that has a birthday today, and I want to wish him a happy birthday, okay? Because we're not going to forget him.
We're really not going to forget that, sir.
Well, I'll tell you what, we appreciate all you do, you know? And it's, sometimes it's, you know, it's a little tough. You know, we're in the trenches right now, you know what I mean? And we're going to make, make things more positive, more better around here as a county, and the, and the citizens are going to be proud of us. So, and you're.
Thank you for your counsel, for your support.
Yep. And I appreciate all your hard work and you coming with us and taking over the leadership of this, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So right now, Counsel, like Mrs. Morris said, we're going to go into recess right now, right? Ms. Morris, we're going to recess.
Yes, Mr. Callahan. Yep.
Yep, we're going to recess until seven o'clock and that's it. Okay. Thank you, Counsel. See you in a little bit.